Not three twenty-eight, it's actually six thirty-two. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I will do a quick roll call. Mike Ahern.
Here.
Zach.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
I'm Rebecca and I am here. John.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Sue. Steve.
Here.
And Steve, are you unable to attend in person this evening?
Hey, my wife had surgery this morning, so I guess stay here, Mike.
Thanks. Did I ask that question correctly, June? That's how I'm supposed to phrase it? Okay. Good. All right, great. So we do have a full, all of our full board members are here, so alternate Sue and, I got, I almost said Steve and Stu. Sue and Steve, please participate in the conversation, but you may not vote this evening.
And Michael Bouchard was excused.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah. And just a reminder, since we have a few guests here, if anybody is not vaccinated, the Town Hall policy is to put a mask on, please, so just trying to remind people of that.
Thanks, June. And just, I think, a quick update, since we are doing the rolls, Zach is now our select board representative, not just the alternate, so welcome for your, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you. Thank you. And condolences.
It's nice that you've been here for a number of meetings, so you see how it works.
Definitely.
All right. Minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from our August nineteenth meeting?
Have.
And aside from missing how quickly Phil can make motions.
I thought we were waiting for one, I'm sorry.
Does anyone have any edits, corrections? For the minutes? All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes if they don't have any, if there are no corrections?
I move we approve the minutes.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Zach. All right, any further discussion on these minutes? I don't think so. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes from our August nineteenth meeting? Okay, aye.
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 Abstain.
Abstention from Carl, thank you. Any opposed?
Stain as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Any public comments this evening unrelated to the business on our agenda? Any communications received, June?
I did, it wasn't directly to the board, but I wanted to let you know somewhere here, I can, I will email this out, but there is a law use, land use law conference on Saturday, the eighteenth. So if anybody was interested, it looks like it's through the municipal association, New Hampshire Municipal Association, with quite a few good sessions, I will forward this to you, and if anybody was interested in attending, I believe there might be a fee, but let me know and we can register you for it, but it is on a Saturday, too, so please think about that.
I think we've had some board members in the past attend this, and they came back with really good information, so someone's so.
I think Scott Whedon's gonna go, I have an event that day, I can't go, so he might be able to get the handouts, too, we can only share those, but I will forward this to you.
I'm gonna move the committee reports to the end, just so we can welcome our guests and talk to them instead, if that's okay with everyone. So if you're on a board or committee, so I won't be putting you on the spot as much, we'll be asking for updates at the end of the meeting. All right. We have a presentation and discussion about housing. So, June, are you able to maybe do a quick introduction?
Sure, although I just realized I forgot to get bios from George and Carmen, so I will, I apologize very much for that. So you guys have to introduce yourselves, and I'm sure you're capable. Yeah. But as I mentioned before in previous meetings, I met Carmen a couple months ago, I don't know how, months or so ago, and we, she had stopped by at Town Hall talking about housing. She is with Lakes Region Community Developers, and also, in that conversation, we said, you know, I knew that there's so much news about housing in New Hampshire, and we have seen some, you know, tight strains on the housing market here in Plymouth, so I thought in that conversation, we decided it would be good to have a presentation come to the planning board here, thank you, Alex, and have, have a talk about housing. So we also invited George Reagan from New Hampshire Housing, because that is an organization that's probably the best at assessing sort of housing data, housing where we are in New Hampshire. So I believe we're gonna have George go first, right? He's got a series of slides, they did send them to me, but I will send them out to the board afterwards, so you'll have that information if you. George, you should be able to share your screen and.
Yes, let me see about that.
Don't forget to give a little more about your background.
Yeah, I definitely will. Okay, can you all see that?
You guys, do you want to?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, so, so thank you for inviting me, it's, it's great to be with you. I also serve on the Dover Zoning Board of Adjustment, so I know what it means to kind of have a lot of work and take a lot of time to volunteer, and so my hope tonight with my presentation is to provide some good information about just what's happening in New Hampshire in terms of the housing market, I know it's, it's not, it's news that you read about every day, so a lot of this may be nothing new, but if I was to say anything that, for those of you that are dealing with your housing challenges in Plymouth, you're not alone, so I think you'll see that by the data that I show. So thanks for inviting me, I'm the Community Engagement Manager at New Hampshire Housing, and really, that's a position that, although the title changed, is really part of our housing awareness program. And essentially, you know, New Hampshire Housing's role is to support, finance, and promote affordable housing throughout the state of New Hampshire. And to do that, we work with a lot of partners, and one of the ways we do that is through the Longcome Housing Tax Credit Program that organizations like Carmen's gets to use to really develop some really important affordable housing that's needed throughout the state. The division I'm in, which is Policy Planning and Communications, does a lot of technical assistance, advocacy, and research, so this is just a couple of things, you may have heard about our annual rent survey, we just put that new one out just a short while ago. So that takes a look at, I'll be showing you some of that data, and lots of data to help communities, so as a community engagement manager, I'm working with a lot of individuals, small groups, planning boards, groups of people that are together trying to understand what's going on in the community about housing, the housing barriers. So to help with that, we also do a lot of other reports, like housing and school enrollment, because that's a big issue, talk a bit about the economics of development, and I'll touch on that just briefly tonight. We're just completing a workforce housing law ten-year retrospective, we'll be talking about the workforce housing law at that New Hampshire Municipal Association Conference, but not so much about the mechanics of the law, but what communities have done to, not only, I guess, comply with the law, but really try to find ways to have a more diverse housing stock based on the challenges they're hearing from people that they're trying to bring into their town or keep. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to mention, and I think essentially what I'll do is kind of move into a little bit more about the housing data. If you have any questions, please shout them out, I may not be able to see you that easily as I look at this presentation, but I'm hoping that I won't just be able to give you some data, but maybe some, some helpful things to think about as you look at your, your challenges or what you're trying to do regard, regarding to housing in your community. So I thought I'd start with the rental market, and again, lots of things in the news, this is our most recent gross rental, our recent survey, and these are the median, so this is the midpoint in terms of rents, and it's gross rent, so it's rent and utilities, so you'll see that sort of the teal line are two bedrooms units, so they've gone up to fourteen ninety-eight a month, this is, again, statewide, and that's about a six percent increase from last year. And then all units have gone up just about the same percentage, slightly lower, because this, this includes not only bigger bedrooms, but also studios and one bedroom. And so I think what you can see from this, and if you've heard me talk before, Ben Frost and others, one of the fascinating things going through the recession we had, past the housing bubble, was that rents kept going up, and that happened for a lot of reasons. Number one, there was a lot of foreclosures, and that was a problem, and then certainly people in rental that their incomes changed, so they couldn't go anywhere either. So rents have continued to go up, as our economy is prospering, it continues to go up as well, and when we look at over the last several years, five percent, five-year change, gone up about twenty-four percent for those two bedrooms and twenty-three percent. So that's kind of significant, that's a, that becomes a burden for people that are trying to get out of the rental market and become first-time homebuyers, or maybe, you know, employers or others trying to recruit people in and trying to find a good place to live. So the vacancy rate, we've heard a lot about, a stable vacancy rate is about five percent, about two percent is when it's just churn, where someone's leaving and maybe it's vacant for a little bit of time. So the low vacancy rate may have something to do with COVID, but really, we've been dealing with this, this low vacancy rate for a long time. So as you can see, we're, we're under one percent, and you'll see later, you know, what the difference is in other regions. When we look at around the state, so this is, again, looking at the monthly gross rent and the percent change, you know, we see those numbers sort of manifest, Grafton County, I know Plymouth is in Grafton County, that's at fourteen sixty-two, we know that Hanover and Lebanon are main drivers of that, but even in Coas County, rents have gone up, so they really have gone up in just about every county in the state, and it's pretty much been that way for all those years. So, and then you can see the percent change, so twenty-two percent in Bellknap County, I can't read those now, oh yeah, twenty, twenty-eight percent, so it's pretty significant, especially since incomes are not really keeping up with that. And if I go and look at this by county, there's that sort of balanced market and the turnover rate, and it's just, to see this is just, you know, eye-opening, because we really have an economy that is, that is growing, and we have an aging population, so there's a lot of folks that are retiring out of the workforce, and much like in other places, where we get our workforce is recruiting from away, so in migration, and so it's really, really important to sort of realize, you know, where do those workers come from, and if they can't come from away, the unfortunate thing is, is businesses are wrestling with one another for the same employee. So taking a look at affordability, so this is looking at median renter household income in these counties, and then taking a look at what the gross rents are, and that we can get to percentage of two-bedroom units that are affordable. So in, in Grafton County, a little bit under eleven percent, Bellknap about six, so it's not, it's not a great number, and when we look at all this across the state, sometimes the more, most affordable units that we can afford are nowhere near us, right? So we see Cheshire County is one of those, Coas County, maybe tough to have a house up and go, or rent an apartment up in Coas County and try to work somewhere like in southern New Hampshire. So that's a bit what's going on in the renter market. I know when I looked at Grafton County, median rent is about eleven hundred, Plymouth itself showed fourteen sixty-two, but the data set is so small, it's pretty volatile. So I thought to myself, you know, it might be better to just take a look at where vacancies are across, across the state, and gross, you know, median rents, and realize that, you know, supply is a, is a challenge. So in the purchase market side, again, we've all heard news here, the median sale price continues to go up, so the, the blue line is sort of following that median sales price, MLS, Multiple Listing Service, and the golden rod is sort of just the trend line, as we see that also continue to go up. So when you look back in two thousand four, five, and six, we called that a housing bubble, and so what do we call this? And certainly fueled by, again, lack of inventory, which I'll talk about in a second, but certainly the impact of really low interest rates, it makes it really good to buy a house, also makes it very good to renovate a house, which also constrain existing home sales on the market. So just, so as you see there, nineteen percent year over year, it's gone up about sixty thousand dollars. And, you know, at some point, that may break, but I don't know if it would be a burst as much, it would just be maybe a flattening, something worse would have to happen. So I did include a slide for Grafton County, it looks kind of squiggly and all over the place, and I want to explain to you that, so the golden rod line is existing home sales in Grafton County, and so the median sales price is somewhere maybe around two hundred and twenty thousand. The, the purple line, if that's the appropriate color, I don't get a voice in our color schemes, but the, the new, the new homes built, and the last time we have numbers for that is back in about two thousand and twelve, and the reason for that is, is there's just so few that are built. Normally, we see that new homes that are built are generally always above the existing home sale price, so here, you know, we're not looking at necessarily really expensive housing overall, but we're looking at the fact that there's not a lot of new housing being added to supply. So I put down there last, in the, in this past calendar year, twenty twenty, there were five new, so, so it doesn't show that data, but I can say the numbers, so Grafton County had five new homes, and Bellknap County fifteen, and just to be clear, they're not seasonal homes, these are cut by homes that are for, for sale for long-term, not for seasonal or vacation homes. And so the inventory, we've seen this everywhere, and if you, if you've been to any of our presentations, it's, we've been saying the same thing, just watching this line kind of, kind of go down, but we're in really this place where, and we all hear about it, right, the competition of not doing, not doing inspections, paying over the asking price, the folks that could do that are folks that maybe have sold a home, have cash or other assets, and that's a real challenge for those that are trying to enter the home buying market, and really, you know, a, a market below two to three months is, is very much, you know, a seller's market, I put in there Grafton County's about two-point-seven, so it follows that, that trend. And so, you know, part of that is, we've really seen a sharp drop-off since the recession for both multifamily construction and, and single-family, and really throughout the recession, our nonprofit partners like Lakes Region and others kind of kept the housing inventory or supply increase going, but really, we see in both for sale and for rent, just the, the real need to try to find ways to incrementally add that up, as well as add, you know, more development to scale where density can work, and where we've got a little bit more of an urban setting, let's say. But as the question was asked, I know Ben Frost asked this a couple of weeks ago at another, another presentation, why aren't building, builders building more, and I don't have the perfect answer, but I wanted to share with you something that, that developers look at, and I think that planning boards and communities need to look at in terms of how they get stuff built that they want, and that is the five Ls. Certainly, we've heard a lot about the, the cost of materials, and I think Karen may talk about that with her projects, but lumber really adds a lot of cost lumber, other materials, labor, if we're trying to build anything, even supply, whether the market rate or not, is there a supply of skilled labor force, and we've got a drain on that in general, and a lot of those folks have kind of concentrated where there's more work to be had, so I look at, you know, some of those solutions of trying to relax land use regulations may not in the end be enough, as we look at the North Country, we just completed a North Country housing study, where there may not be enough labor force to actually build things that can be built up there to help with the housing shortage they're having. The availability of land, and I think it's important that we all know that in a lot of places, we might say land is built out, but maybe it's built out because of zoning requirements or acreage minimum acreage requirements, and I think it's always good to look and say, are those reasonable, or are they not? So while land is finite, intensity of use is variable. Loans, maybe not so much the problem, I know developers at the front end, there's a lot of risks, so pre-development is a challenging place to get, to get investment for project underway, and then sort of finally, I, I look at laws and regulatory practices, and I think what I would say is that when I'm working with communities or trying to look at what some of the challenges are, I often say, you know, what are some of your regulations, and is there, let's take a look at what that does to maybe constrain what a developer's gonna do. And this is where I often say, the getting the developer's perspective, for anyone that's looking at, you know, their community and why they're not getting the housing they want, it would be good to have some conversations with some people that are developers that are reputable, that can really kind of say, you know, here's some issues that I find a problem, we've got to do too many variances, that's always something that adds time, it, it risks predictability, which is a challenge to developers that sometimes are operating, especially on that front end, with a lot of risk and not a lot of reward, so I, I sort of commend that to you as, as you're looking at, at housing in your community and thinking about it, to look at some of those professionals that can help provide some insight to what kind of moves something from no-go to go. And one example might be if you're trying to do an incentive bonus to get some affordable housing, let's say, and we're gonna talk about this at the law, the law lecture, so I have Andy Dean from Conway who helped write Conway's Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, and they sort of had the density bonus kind of all wrong, they gave a small percentage bonus, but required a large percentage of more targeted affordable housing, they just didn't pencil out, and I believe there's a lot of, lot of regulations on the books that may not really work in reality, but maybe make sense as you put them together. And so that just kind of brings us to the housing challenge that we're all aware of, we have an aging population, lots of younger adults that do have higher debt load, so that impacts their ability to, to find good quality rental and, and maybe to move into homeownership. And I, and I just want to say that, you know, we're, we're, we're sort of in competition for skills, so there, there may be a different preference and desire for younger people on the kind of housing they want, so, you know, lower-priced housing that's maybe dilapidated may not bring that person in, and therefore, they don't come to work in that employer until they don't add to the economy. Older adults, I'm hearing more and more, there's older people that don't have any kids, and they're in the, they're in the three and four-bedroom homes, and they want to stay in their community, but there's nothing for them, there's not, there's no new small homes for them or places to rent if they want to do that. Our other challenge that we talked about is housing needs to support the regional economy, and it's really important, I think the other thing, is to be in conversation with employers about what they're looking for, and, and, and then along with that is, you know, looking at that housing stock with the needs and desires of a changing population. And I think here is where it's important to be in conversation with our own community and our region about the people that, you know, we kind of need, I think a lot of LNA's and other, other people that do so much important work for our aging parents and assisted living, and, you know, they need to live nearby, and they don't make a whole lot, but they're people that are giving really important care, so I think it's important to put a person and a name and a face with the conversation about housing. But the question would be is, what are your housing options that you have now in your community, and who are you trying to reta, attract and retain, what are their living preferences, and then looking at, you know, your land use regulations, what do you allow? I think the realization, you know, that there's a lot of demand for similar type of housing, and so one solution won't apply, and I think of small D developer and big D, you know, thinking of, can someone use some savings to maybe build a detached accessory dwelling in it, and anecdotally, I'm seeing that happen where those older people are selling their homes, taking that cash and moving in with maybe their, one of their children, and, and as I talk to a builder, it's not the homeowner that's paying the bill, it's the parent that sold the house, and they're, and so they're trying to live there, which I think is great, but if you don't allow detached A to U's, that might make it more difficult to do, just an example. So, and we all know that, well, I might say locally resistant to housing development, there's a lot of myths and misinformation out there, and that's why I think it's important to talk with people and, and make the housing real, and not about affordable or workforce, but about people and who's in your community and who you want to keep. And I think at the end, I, I may be near the end here, the, the market summary that I've kind of highlighted is just a strong demand for housing, renters' income aren't keeping pace, and that's a real potential impact on, on our economy, which we all have to keep a, keep an eye on. Oh, I'm sorry, I had one more thing, I always forget this part, so I know in our call, we talked, as we prepared for this, about some of the older homes in, in Plymouth, and I was reminded that Keene has this approach, twenty-one and twenty-one, it's Keene's middle neighborhoods, and Keene is a college town, a lot of these were college sort of rental housing, and now it's not so much that anymore, and they're trying to find ways to help work with homeowners to try to renew and revitalize that, and so their, their goal is to try to renovate some of those buildings and try to increase homeownership and owner occupancy in the neighborhoods that had become predominantly rental, and I did think of you as, I think that's the subject matter you talk about, and then what I recently came across that was not familiar to me during this last legislative session, was Senate Bill one-oh-two that, I think you've heard a lot about some of the HB five-eight-six where there was Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive that was increased, but this one, this part, which is part of this, is targeted to older housing stock, where you can kind of freeze the, the property value that might allow a homeowner to do some renovation, and they, they, they have like several years of tax relief being, being assessed at the same level before the, it goes up. So I saw that, I wanted to make you aware of it, it might be interesting. And then, and then finally, just a reminder, because I have to do this, that we fund Plan New Hampshire's Municipal Technical Assistance Grant Programs, we've relaxed this, this, so it's not so much we've got to come up with land use regulations, but if you're trying to take a look at what are, what are we thinking about with housing and our, and our community, because it's not just housing, you think of Main Street, mixed, mixed development, mixed-use development is really, really important with housing and retail and commercial, but just to remind you that it's, that it's out there, and to certainly feel free to talk to, to myself about that, should you have any thoughts about it? And with that, I'll entertain questions if you want to move on to Carmen, just let me know what you'd like.
If you've got questions, any.
Do we, do we know, are there other communities that have implemented the, the tax incentive under SB one-oh-two?
No, because it just, it just got signed like in June, yeah. And, and I know with the other incentive, which is just trying to find your, your revitalization zones, I think towns, some of them are just starting to look at that, especially as it comes to housing, because city ninety has been used in a lot of places, Rochester comes to mind, for some more commercial development, might have a little bit of residential, so this is kind of new, and, and that's why I think we're trying to look and say, can we help interpret some of that, so towns have a little more information to help make some of those decisions.
So typically, an assessment consists of, you know, value of the home based on size and condition, and what they're gonna do is prevent the change in condition from affecting the assessed value, and you're still gonna be taxed on the, kind of the old condition, same-size home.
Right, and the idea is to incentivize redevelopment, which in the end, you know, the calculus would be that it would pay for itself in the long run.
Right. I have heard of that working well, and I think Rutland, Vermont's doing that, and I know that there were a lot of young people that were buying older homes in their downtown area because of the affordability and tax incentive there.
Right. And so, and I think with Keene, it might be good, Med Kupinski or Rhett Lamb in the city of Keene could be folks you could talk to, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that, if you've not, if you didn't know that program, that may be interesting to talk to them and see how they're, they're going with that. I know New Hampshire Housing funded, put some money forth to help fund a position that was trying to work with the neighborhood and see where, where it's gone, so it's fairly new, I'm not sure what the results are, but I, I think it's interesting what they're trying to do, and there's some similarities with both of you being college towns and some similar structures.
I was kind of curious, I've been hearing about regulations about owner occupancy in Conway, and I, I think that's getting tied up in court at this point, and I'm curious if, what you know about that and what insights you might have coming out of all this.
You mean short-term rentals?
Yeah, short-term rentals and mandating owner occupancy on any short-term rental properties.
Yeah, I, I don't, I know that it's, I feel like it's, it's a test case, I don't know that there's, I think there's been communities where they've said that accessories dwelling units are, that are, that are that way, are regulated as a commercial business, so I'm sort of just standing back and waiting, just waiting to see what's happening, I don't really have any information on that, I do know that Conway's Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance does prohibit short-term rentals, and that's been reviewed and seems legal, so I think it's kind of a gray area, to be honest.
Did you say that Grafton County, maybe I just misread the slide, there was only five new homes this year being built?
Twenty-twenty, yeah, for, not for seasonally use, but for primary purchase, so there could be a lot more units that are built that are for private use, for seasonal vacation, whatever.
It's hard to believe, huh? I mean, we were shut down, but it's still very odd, every carpenter I know is busy.
Yeah, it's, it's true, COVID was, you know, a tough time for that, but I, I. Yeah, it's, it's true. COVID was, you know, a tough time for that, but I, I, and so I think, you know, I should go back and see what it was the year before. I just, I just know that with those building permits, the, the building overall, I think, I think the real thing is that our production, both single family and multifamily has just really been constrained. And I think, I think it's really important for us all to look at, you know, incrementally, what, what is it on our end? You know, it could be in some places, there just isn't that, that labor force. Like you could pull out all the stops and maybe there just isn't a skilled labor just set to do that. And so, and I believe that could be the case, certainly in more, more rural areas, but I think it's just important to look and say, what, what needs to happen in order to maybe incentivize some more development? And again, as I said, in some cases, it could be simply looking at detached accessory dwelling units as, as one element. Or acreage, if it's not really required for, you know, private water and sewer or the like. And so a part of what I think workforce housing law asks people to do is if you're trying to provide reasonable and realistic opportunities, and I would just say for a variety of housing, take a look at your land use regulations as one place to see what might be getting in the way. And use a consultant, use the M tag, use, um, developers to gain a lot of really good insight.
Can you give us any, any kind of takeaways or, you know, executive summary of the, the 10-year retrospective on the workforce housing? I, it looks like you, you had recently, is that something you recently finished?
Yeah, I think a lot of communities say, you know, it's such a big issue. There's nothing we can do about it. And, and I think sometimes you hear around the state that maybe there's a dearth of housing to the tune of 20,000 units. And I, I don't like to talk about that because I don't think that helps small communities try to think about their part. And, and I think that it still may be the people having a concern about changing their rural character. So there was a lot of that that was there. But then there was a lot of, um, communities looking at like Amherst, London Dairy, they're saying, you know, we need to really find a way to make sure that workers that are working in our region, not, at least of which are, are municipal employees. Um, and, and understanding that the developer calculus and trying to relax some, some of the regulations, especially incentivizing some developments with some are market rate and some are targeted. Bedford did a great job of that, but there's been a lot of pushback lately. So these same fears of too much change, congestion, schools are important parts of the conversation. And I think that, um, but in the end, I think if you can have those as a balanced conversation, you can kind of come out and maybe change some things to have increased supply. But those are some of the takeaways of, of the pushback. What can we, what can we do about it? Um, and I think that's where I think a lot of communities might be missing the mark of just thinking, you know, we don't have to put a 40 unit apartment complex in Sutton, Hampshire, but we might be able to, um, allow some detached ADUs or some maybe duplexes in, in areas. I know there's a community that has allows multifamily, but they've got a hundred foot setback on each side, front, back and side. So it's not a lot that you can build in there. I know another community that has three acre zoning, but to do a detached ADU, you need six. And I don't even sure how that even floats with conservation, um, goals. So those are some, some of the things that, that have come out with that. And we should have that report coming out by the end of this month, let's hope, knock on wood. But we will speak about it a bit and you'll hear more from Mark Ruger on these, on the 18th.
I'll look forward to that. Thank you.
Just in general, Plymouth compared to the other towns in the state, do you think the housing issue is a larger issue in Plymouth? Pretty similar to other towns or where do you think we kind of, if you can predict kind of where, where we are?
Yeah, I, the only way I could really do that is if I, if I really took a look at your land use regulations and I didn't. I, I, I think probably if you looked at yours, you might see, you know, areas where you can maybe allow some incremental opportunity to happen, but I, I'm not really at this point able to sort of assess that. I would say that many communities, their land use regulations are retrospective. They were trying to deal with a previous issue. Um, strong demand, strong growth, growth control measures and school age population that isn't the same anymore. Um, and I think it's hard to come around to that and say, and I've heard communities that have a lot of school age populations have been lost and they're still fearful that they may be busting at the seams again. Even though demographics tell us something different. Especially with our 2020 census that while there's some population gain in some places, there's, um, there's, there's been decline in, in others.
Any other questions? How about from our members of the public? Make sure you get a chance to ask any questions. Go ahead, Matt.
Um, I was just wondering if George can define the term affordable as been used in his presentation. I think that term carries a lot of ambiguity between the layman and the developer. And that clarification, uh, just in how you're using that word affordable. Your presentation.
I think I heard that, sorry.
Can you hear that? Did you hear it, George?
I didn't quite make it out.
I'll go to the microphone.
I, I can just repeat it. Um, the, um, we have a member of the public here who wants to know how you're defining, um, affordable in terms of housing.
Well, I purposely didn't define affordable. But if you, if you want to, and, and for the reason is, you know, Plymouth should be thinking about its own citizenry and the people they're trying to attract, attract and retain for its local and regional economy. But if you want to look at the workforce housing law, it's, um, affordable for sale is, is defined as a, be a hundred percent of the area median income for the, for that, that area and paying no more than like 30% on principal interest taxes and insurance. Um, and for a renter, it's, um, the workforce housing law looks at 60% of the area median income in your region for a family of three. Even though they don't have to necessarily be family of three, that's just how they get to an income number. And paying no more than 30% of that gross number monthly on, uh, rent and utilities.
Long question from that. How many projects do they, they've affiliated with and supporting that are not, not affordable? Does that make sense?
You mean New Hampshire housing?
Yeah. Like what they advocate for that are not, not like affordable.
I don't think you're. You're asking how many, uh, how, what kind of units there that are non-affordable that do they advocate?
Yeah, like they work with.
Well, I think, George, maybe can you explain a little bit about New Hampshire housing's role in, um, being, you don't really work as a developer, right? You provide some funding.
That's right. Carmen is a developer. Right.
So funding that you provide though is more on the affordable housing side, right? I mean, you're not, you're not providing funding for higher end homes or can a single family get a loan through?
Right. So, so in, through the, through the tax credit program, there's, and Carmen can really talk more about that. But in some places there've been, there's been some mixed income developments to make the numbers work. Um, so sometimes that's needed and that, and that's allowed in the tax credit program so that some might be more market rate. And again, a lot of those numbers aren't necessarily very much different. There, there's, there's a bit of a difference, but it's not like we're funding developments that then go out and charge 2,500 or $3,000 a, a month in rent. So if that clarifies it.
George, can I ask a general question about the workforce housing law? I mean, we, we've been dealing with it for about 10 years and I believe Plymouth has um, accommodations in place to allow for workforce housing, but I wanted to play devil's advocate and say, you know, if a town can demonstrate that they already have a certain level of affordability in their housing stock, they're not required to have those, are they?
Right. That would be a fair share defense.
Right. If, if we can meet our fair share of affordable housing already, we're not required to have that. So I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need to have those and I think that we should, but just, I, I always thought that was an interesting thing about the law is that if a town, you know, I, I would, I would argue that Plymouth probably has its fair share of affordable housing already. But I think we are still trying to accommodate workforce housing in future developments.
Yeah. And I think, I, I think the thing to think about that's important is it, it, it's, um, your fair share as it relates to the community. So it does look beyond your borders. Um, and, and for the current foreseeable future, and it takes into account economic, um, activity and, 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 um, economic growth. So there, there's a lot that goes into that number.
Yeah.
Um, but there isn't, no one's producing those numbers necessarily. Regional planning commissions aren't looking and saying, okay, here's the region and here's your fair share.
Right.
But, but your, your point is good when the workforce housing law does two distinct things. It says, you know, are you providing reasonable and realistic opportunities for workforce housing? So if you looked at your last, you know, home sales, you know, were they under? And if I look at Grafton County, so estimated affordable purchase price would be $348,000. So it could be that your homes that are selling are within that.
I'd say the majority of homes are.
Yeah. And then, you know, is your rents, you know, 1,180 or less. But the thing is, is the question still is, is that the economy is growing and what are the pain points of people in your community? And that's where I oftentimes really depart from what the workforce housing law, because there are people experiencing struggles and needs, even though you might be able to prove you've got your fair share. And again, you may have homes that are selling for something that, that a select few want and, and there's a choice. People have a choo- choice to move into your region and, and work for, for Plymouth or for Spear Hospital or somebody else, or go somewhere else. And, uh, you know, we do have a, on a low unemployment rate. So there's a lot we mix in when you try to have those conversations.
Yeah.
But I think you got it right.
Well, I, yeah, it's, I just, I wanted to have that conversation just so that, just to build familiarity with, with the workforce housing laws. Because I, I know we have some new board members. I don't know how, how familiar the members of the public are, but I, I find it to be an interesting way of dealing with it and, and creative. You know, I, I fully support, you know, I, I think when it first came out, there was a lot of fear that it was a, it was not, it was kind of a a low income program and it's really not. It's intended to be, you know, workforce housing. It's, you know, for people that are in the community, teachers, firefighters, police, you know, municipal employees, you know, it's intended to provide affordable housing for most of us. So.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why sometimes it's almost, I think the numbers are, are higher than what the real need is.
Right.
When you look at folks that are, that are making a decent income and, and have some college debt, don't know if they can afford a house for 348,000. Um, and they may not, but they also may not be able to find a place to rent either.
Right.
Because whether you've met your fair share or not, the vacancy rate is really low. And that tells us we don't have enough supply.
Right.
I think we should move on to our next speaker. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
George.
All right. I'll go ahead and share our screen so we can. Can everybody see that all right?
Yep.
Yep.
Great. Uh, well, good evening. Thanks for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to address the board. My name's Carmen Lorenz and I'm the executive director at Lakes Region Community Developers. And I'm joined this evening by Sal Stephen Hubbard, who is our real estate development director. Uh, and as George mentioned, we are the nonprofit, uh, housing developer that covers the Lakes region. So there's, there's seven different nonprofit developers in the state and, and we're the one in this area. We cover the same footprint as the Lakes Region Planning Commission. So Plymouth and Holderness are kind of at the, the northern, uh, end of our boundary. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background and then Sal's going to go into, um, just kind of explaining our process and, and we'd be happy to take questions at any point. Um, but we've been around for, uh, 30 years. We started out in the early nineties. And we, over the last 30 years have, um, we've built up a rental portfolio of 366 apartments in six different towns in the Lakes region. Um, so I just thought I'd show you some pictures of the homes that we've built. To, to top left, this is over in Wolfboro where we have a development of 48 rental apartments. Uh, top middle is our Pinecrest Apartments in Meredith, which is a 32, uh, unit development. Um, the top right is Guilford Village Knowles, which is a senior housing project that we did in Guilford, um, a couple of years ago. That's got 24 apartments in that building. Bottom left is, uh, our Rivers Edge Apartments in Laconia, right in downtown Laconia. And that's a 32 unit apartment building. Um, here in the middle, we've got Lockmere Meadows, which is in Tilton. That's 47 apartments there. And then the bottom right is another development we did in Laconia, which is a little smaller. It's got 18 apartments. Um, but again, right in downtown Laconia. Um, so as you can see, we've, um, you know, we really pride ourselves on developing beautiful, energy efficient homes for, for essential workers in the Lakes region. And I wanted to touch really briefly on economic development, um, just so you understand, although we, you know, we, we really see ourselves as part of the economic development ecosystem in the region, um, because we focus on workforce housing. Uh, and although we are a nonprofit organization, we do pay taxes on a hundred percent of our properties. So over our 28 years of, uh, operating our portfolio, we've paid about $5 million in local property taxes to the towns where we have properties. And then just as importantly, if not more so, you know, touching on what George said, I think it's, it's talking to the businesses in town to find out, you know, how are their workers doing? In terms of being able to find places that they can afford to live that are good quality housing. I mean, we really focus on healthy homes. So we use, um, you know, and green materials, we build very energy efficient, uh, houses because we know that that helps families, uh, with their budgets every month, just making sure that they're not spending more than they should on, you know, heating and cooling. And that their kids are growing up in homes that don't have lead paint and asbestos and other contaminants or pests. So that's really our focus. Uh, and most of our, um, tenants, as you can see, this, this photo here, this is a, uh, one of our tenants in Laconia and her two children. And she's an L and A that works at one of the nursing homes, um, very typical family. We, we have, you know, most of our tenants work healthcare and social services. That's the biggest category, uh, followed by food service and retail and then education, you know, a lot of, uh, teachers aides in particular. Um, and also manufacturing. So I just wanted to share that with you all because our, you know, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding around workforce housing, but it really is housing for the people who live and work in your community. Um, and what we see in our portfolio is that the, the labor force participation rate of our tenants is, it almost matches exactly the statewide labor force participation rate. So, you know, it's a diverse mix of people. But, uh, our, our focus is really on making sure that we've got healthy housing for the people that live and work here. And I know, I've spoken mostly about, uh, the rental housing that we've developed over our history, but um, in 2017, we actually expanded our mission. Because we, you know, we are a developer and that's what we specialize in. And we saw a need for other types of, um, real estate projects. So we started working on developing starter homes, you know, as, as George talked about, to help some of those young families that are trying to graduate into homeownership, uh, to make sure that there's some inventory there for them. So we're working on our first project right now in Wolfboro. Uh, it's a starter home development of 20 houses. Um, and another area is supportive housing, which, uh, we, in that regard, we partner with service providers. Um, here on the slide, you can see this, this bedroom with the two beds in it. That's, um, our first supportive housing project, which is a, a group home. Um, it's got eight beds. It's for women in recovery from substance use disorder. So we partnered with, um, some of our substance use disorder providers in Laconia to, um, we developed the building and they operate it and work with the women who, who live there. Um, and also homelessness, you know, at least in the Laconia area has really been on the upswing and probably in most other towns throughout the, uh, the region. So working with some providers to try and figure out how we can provide some options to get people housed. Um, and then lastly, uh, community facilities is another type of project that we started to do recently. Uh, this other photo on the slide is the picture of our first community facilities project, which is an old school in Belmont. It's called the Gale School. And we are partnering, um, re- redeveloping that. It's going to be a, an early learning center on the first floor. That's going to be operated by the Boys and Girls Club. And then on the second story, uh, Lakes Region Community Services is going to have a new program center up there. Uh, so, you know, really starting to do things other than just the rental housing, although that's still our primary, uh, focus. Um, but where we, where we see a need and there's a partnership, um, and a property that makes sense, we, we are definitely interested in doing other types of projects. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Sal now so she can share a little bit about the process that we go through when we're looking at a project.
So I think, um, uh, George talked a little bit about, um, the impact of local regulations, um, which is part of our feasibility analysis. When we look at a site, we are looking for a site that will, um, allow us to provide. When we look at a site, we are looking for a site that will, um, allow us to provide, um, safe, decent housing, um, affordably for folks who need it. Um, so, um, we look at zoning, we look at wetlands, we look at density allowance, we look at, um, whether or not there's water in sewer, and, um, those are kind of the most important things that we look at, is how we can use the land that we're looking at. Um, and our process is usually quite a long process, and so we're looking for sellers that are willing to kind of hang in with us for a while. Um, because when we're working with New Hampshire Housing, um, to get resources, there is a schedule that, um, can, uh, take up to two years to actually get into construction. Um, doing the, um, feasibility analysis and other due diligence that we have to do and pre-development work, um, just to get to the point where we can start applying for financing to New Hampshire Housing and community development block grants and other sources, um, can, as I said, can take, you know, 18 months, um, and then another, you know, six months to actually get the financing into, to the point where we can actually close and start construction. So we typically would make an offer with contingencies, pay a deposit, uh, move the process along, um, continue doing site investigation, concept plans, and requesting planning approvals from a community such as Plymouth. Um, and, um, in, at the same time, we're working on securing, um, financing and, um, putting the project together. And it, it's a, it's a bit of a slog. It's actually really fun, but, um, that's why I do it. Um, but it can take 12 to 18 months and cost $100,000 to $150,000 more in some cases, um, depending on, um, the approval process. Um, you know, sometimes you run into issues that are really difficult to overcome, and that stretches your budget. Um, and then, uh, once we have secured financing, you know, it's another six to eight months to actually get to closing and, and start construction, and that's another 100 to 150,000. So, um, we typically, we have, um, internal revolving funds that we can use for those pre-development expenses. We also, um, are lucky that, uh, New Hampshire Housing, uh, will fund a portion of that. Um, and, uh, so, um, that helps us get, get through the process to the point where we can actually, um, get into construction. But it's expensive and time-consuming. Um, so most of the sites that we look at, uh, we don't even make an offer, because, uh, there's no density allowable, there, the, it's, I looked at a site, um, recently over the summer, that when we looked closely at it, it was almost all wetlands. Um, so even though there was water in sewer very close to the site, which was making it really interesting, um, then, uh, really the, we couldn't get the density that we needed because of the amount of wetlands. So, um, but we look at every project from both a mission and a risk perspective. So the boxes here showing low mission and high risk, and high mission, high risk and high mission, low risk, where we never want to be is low mission, high risk, um, or low mission, low risk, you know, is kind of a little more attractive, but there's really not much point in doing it, because we're not serving our community. Um, so that's kind of what drives, um, our decision-making, um, so that if there is a high mission aspect to the site that we're looking at, then we're willing to take on a little more risk. Um, and, um, so, um, yeah, that's kind of, uh, how we, how we assess a site.
And we're happy to, to take any questions, if you have them.
Um, I know when we talked before, there was a little bit of discussion about, uh, and I, I think you've got some additional slides about, like, because it came up about affordable housing, and who are your, your tenants? Who are, who do you serve? Um, and how can we better understand, like, what, um, because, I mean, you're getting, to, to be a developer, you're getting, um, grant funding from one place or another, from a variety of federal and state sources to help provide housing. So with that, you are required to, is it true that, I mean, are all of your tenants have some income, um, maximum amount of income they can be making to be one of your tenants? Or is there, is it just 51% or more has to be that level? And how do you do that?
Yep, that's, that's a, that's a great question. Um, so when we're talking about building rental homes, um, using the sources that New Hampshire Housing has available, uh, yes, we are talking about, basically, we apply for this funding to help build the building, you know, build the housing. And in return, we are promising that we will rent the apartments to people that are under certain income limits. So I, on the slide in front of you, um, are the income limits. And now there's a little bit more flexibility than in past years to include market rate, what we, what we refer to as market rate units. So those are, that's the top line, would be the, the highest income limit. And then, you know, you can go down the line there, so 140% of AMFI, which stands for Area Median Family Income, that would be considered market rate. And then, um, most of what we've built to date, uh, is in the 60 and the 50% lines. So you can see the, it, it goes by household. So that's what we have to look at when someone applies for one of our apartments, is we look at how many people are in their house, and then we look at their, their total income, um, before taxes in a year, and we check to make sure that they're under these limits. So for most of our, like I said, most of our households, uh, if you have a single parent who's working, um, most of the industries that they're working in, you know, they're making in the low $30,000 range. So if they have one or two children, then they're definitely under the, under the income limits, um, that apply to most of our units. Um, but we do, we do have a lot of, um, you know, two-parent households as well, where maybe just one of the parents is working and the other is taking care of the children if they're really little, because that, that is something we hear a great deal about, um, really hard to find affordable childcare, uh, for, for our tenants. Uh, but this will give, this gives you a good sense, and you can go on New Hampshire Housing's website. These are the income limits for Grafton County, and I think they're very, very close to what, um, the limits are for Valnap County and Carroll County as well. They're pretty similar in the, in the Lakes Region. Uh, but they do have all this information up on their website. And so we have to promise to rent to, um, households that fall under these income limits. So you can see, you know, three-person household, if they have to be under 60%, then that means $47,520. Um, and if you then look at the other piece of what we promise to do is not charge rents that are over these quote-unquote "fair market rents," which are determined by HUD. Um, so if it's a 60%, if it's a unit that's reserved for a family under 60%, and that's a two-bedroom unit, then it cannot be more than $1,152 in rent. I can tell you that none, like, our rents are not that high. We don't even go as high as the fair market rents, just based on the wages that we see people earning. We know they can't afford that much in rent. So most of our two bedrooms are, um, under $1,000 a month.
If I may ask, so, so what is the, um, stability of these homes for people? Let's say someone moves to a new job and is making a lot more money then, um, do they move out?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's a great question. So, um, and the answer is, it depends a little bit. Uh, in most cases, no, they don't have to move out. We only certify, uh, we only look at the income eligibility when they move in, in terms of whether they're eligible. We do actually do an annual recertification with all of our tenants, so they do have to submit their income every year to us. Um, but if they end up going over the, the income limit, no, they don't, they don't get evicted, they do not have to move out. Um, what happens in some of our properties where we have some other, uh, funding involved that is much more restrictive in terms of the, uh, the income levels, we actua- we actually lose out because of those, those properties, which we don't, um, we don't use this program anymore. It's a USDA program, and it really hasn't had much funding, um, recently. But that, that provided some rental subsidy to help families, um, pay their rent every month. So we, we, as the owner and manager of the property, we actually lose the rent subsidy if we have somebody who's over the income limits in those properties, but we would not, not likely be talking about that type of, um, type of property in the future.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Have you ever done a project in Plymouth? I noticed you didn't, uh, show any pictures of any, so I assume maybe not. Um, and is that because of current zoning regulations, or have you just not found the right property?
No, um, we have not done a project in Plymouth yet. We would, we would absolutely love to do one, uh, at some point. Um, we, we did start looking around this summer. Uh, we have, we do have a property in Ashland, so that's as close as we are to Plymouth right now. Um, and, and I do, I think, um, the, the limit on the number of units that you can have in one building was, uh, was one of the issues that, um, we felt would probably, you know, cause, cause a problem for us. Um, you know, we do have some flexibility in terms of how we configure a development. Um, so I don't know if Sal wants to touch on this at all, but, um, in most cases, uh, like, you could see from the pictures, um, some of our buildings are, you know, much more townhouse style. So this one here, uh, top left of the screen in Wolfboro, I think those buildings all have, um, four units in them, but it is one, you know, project, one development that we did at a time. A lot of our, um, a lot of our family properties are more of a townhouse style, uh, when it comes to the architecture. But we do also do larger buildings as well. So it depends, you know, if it was something like redeveloping a, a, a building downtown, you'd probably be looking at doing something in one building together, maybe. Six units might be a problem, because we generally, um, when we do a project, we, we generally like to have, you know, 24 to 30 units in the project, because that just, if we're talking about rental project, that is what is needed in order to kind of make the numbers work out.
Plymouth, I think, 14 years ago, uh, approved, I think, a 24-unit workforce housing project that's on, um, Fairgrounds Road.
Mm-hmm. We also haven't been in the, I mean, we obviously haven't moved as a town. We just joined the Lake, Lakes Region Planning Commission, so us being, Plymouth being Lakes Region, as far as being in the service area, is, is relatively new, just a couple of years old, so.
Were you up there?
We were, um, North Country Council.
Oh.
Yep, and we just made a decision to move to, to the LRPC. And Carmen, there, there isn't, yeah, Plymouth just, if you didn't hear that, um, just a few years ago, joined Lakes Region Planning, so that, that's the region you work in. Um, but I guess if we think about it previously, where, do you know, is there a similar kind of developer like you that's in the North Country Council region? I'm not really aware of one.
Yeah, um, so there's not, like, a head is based up in Littleton, and they cover, um, they cover Northern Grafton and Coos County. So, yeah, I would say, I don't want to say Plymouth's been in a bit of a no man's land, but, um, I don't think there's been a developer, at least like, like the nonprofit housing developers, um, like us, that's, that's been very active in, in Plymouth.
Okay. So the other, I guess, um, I have a question, so, sorry, I don't mean to... Go ahead, June. Uh, you're a nonprofit developer, so some of those, you know, the big costs that come from either, it looks like in some cases you buy and renovate, maybe a structure potentially, or you're building new. Um, those major costs that you're, you know, you're getting grant funds, right, from New Hampshire Housing, or community development block grants, or rural development, to help o- offset that. Um, and then, then in exchange, you're obligated to rent to those kind of essential workers or other people that may be of a little bit lower income. I guess, what is your experience if you were, just pretending you were a for-profit developer? Um, yeah, I mean, then you're not necessarily being ac- being able to access that funding to help offset the costs of the development, right? So that typically, what happens is then the price goes up, because the developer wants to make money, so they're building higher-end kind of stuff, right?
Yes, I mean, it, it, that's why we have these programs, because if your motive is making money, it's very hard to make money if you're developing housing for people of lower incomes, um, simply because you, it's, it's difficult to charge rents, you know, where you're, you're making, uh, a significant amount of net income every year off the property. Um, but, but to clarify, uh, for-profit developers can utilize the, the programs, um, some of the programs that New Hampshire Housing offers. So it's not just nonprofit developers like us that build this, um, rental product. And we also are starting to build things, um, that, uh, you know, are a little bit more like a for-profit developer, although we, we are trying to utilize some programs, like the starter home type of development. Um, there's not as much, um, capital subsidy available in New Hampshire to help developers do that, which is one of the reasons why we're not seeing a lot of starter homes being developed, is because there just isn't a toolbox for people to use to build that. And again, it's really hard to build it. The, the project that we were doing in Wolfboro, we've been working on it for four years, and we did go out to bid this, um, this year, and the bids, you know, as you know, the pricing is just crazy, and the bids came in so high that I think we would have had to, we could have built the homes, but we would have had to sell them for close to $400,000, which is not at all the market that we're trying to target, um, for first-time buyers. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try again next year, um, because it is very tough to, to do that and keep the prices affordable for people that we're trying to, to target.
I actually had a que- so, a question. Um, so you're, given that you're trying to, and you are, um, producing affordable housing, and, uh, uh, one of the factors in this is, of course, the avail- the availability of affordable real estate. And I gue- I guess my, my question is, either, either fairly dense, uh, units for the most part, um, and there's a certain benefit of having these near denser downtown areas and walkability and those sorts of factors. And at the same time, a lot of that less expensive real estate would be further outside of that. So I'm curious what, what the track record is and where these are placed within communities, and how that relates to other dense housing types within those communities.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I would say that we don't shy away from properties that other developers might go, oh, never mind, I don't want to do that. So we've, you know, we've done redevelopment of brownfield sites and taken, like, the Gale School project in Belmont. That is not a building like a normal developer would have any interest in, because it's, you know, it's just like a dilapidated building, and it's gonna require a lot of, um, a lot of money, which we can access as a nonprofit organization. So, so yes, we do, uh, we do infill development, we love doing infill development. Um, if there's a property that, you know, it just doesn't make sense for a for-profit developer to do, we, we can maybe use some programs that they couldn't in order to make it work out. Um, and it's, you know, it is harder to do, but like Sal said, I mean, we, we enjoy that kind of project, so it's definitely, if you, if you have a property like that, let us know, we could take a look at it. But the one in Laconia that I showed you, um, is, uh, that was a brownfield site, this one down here, this 32-unit building. This was just really gross. I don't know if you're familiar with Laconia, but it's right on Union Avenue, um, in downtown, and it was, uh, I don't know, what was it, like, it was a factory, but I forget, it had several.
Yeah, it was the Vernatron, it was part of the Vernatron complex, so is Millview, actually.
Oh, this one, this one was too. So that was some pretty nasty, nasty stuff that, uh, that we cleaned up and put some really nice housing in it, clean. Go ahead, Sal, you wanted to add something.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, um, certainly the closer a property is to a, to the downtown of a municipality, the better it is for the people who live there, and also the, the higher the likelihood that there might be public water and public sewer, depending on, on the town, um, which always makes the project easier, but as you know, that also makes the land more expensive. So, but, um, you know, there are a lot of small towns in the Lakes Region, and, um, so, you know, we're, we'd like to provide a service to any of those small towns that would like to have us in them. So, um, we don't, we can't really pick and choose, we can't cherry pick sites. Um, but it gets down to that whole risk versus mission analysis. Um, and so if we can balance risk with high mission... And so if we can balance risk with high mission, then we'll do it.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Anything from the public? Any questions? Go ahead, Matt. You want to say it, I can translate it too, if that may be, whatever.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Will you guys take on projects if you're not getting, let's see, credits, tax credits from New Hampshire Financing Authority? Like the bigger ones, like the 30, 40-unit apartment buildings? If you don't get your applications approved for tax credits, do you still take those off the ground and go forward with them? Or is it primarily based on getting those tax credits?
So, yeah, I mean, we typically, if it's a project that we had planned to do as a tax credit project, what sometimes happens is we have to apply more than once, so if we don't get the credits in the first try, then we can reapply next year if the seller or the owner is still willing to work with us and, you know, hold it for us. We have to be able to demonstrate that we have site control in order to have a successful funding application. So sometimes, like Sal said, it can take two years, sometimes three years, hopefully not, but, yeah. We have not, to date, done just a straight, you know, equity deal where we were just financing the whole project and doing it as a for-profit. You know, that is something that, in theory, we could do, it's just not, has not been our focus and our mission to date, to do that kind of project. But we like to mix in, we like the idea of being able to serve a wide range of income limits at a property, that's very appealing to us. So having some market rate units mixed in with the other levels of affordability is something that we really, really look forward to doing.
Follow-up, second question from that. So you guys pay taxes, property taxes, 100% right now, which is very commendable, but like, in Laconia, you guys have a little over 30 buildings with a town assessment of more than $5 million. What says that you guys just can't stop paying your property taxes? Like, I think we used to get money from this college, and then we stopped getting money from them, so it's great you guys do it, helps out with all the resources that are taken to operate in these communities, but what happens, or what's to stop you guys, or what, you know, what happens if you stop paying those taxes? Are there guidelines in place that ensure those taxes are still going to be paid and then the burden's not going to be put on the town afterwards? If something does change with your board of directors, or, you know, the mission of the trust, or the community developers?
Another mid-state situation here.
Right. That would be, so typically what happens if a nonprofit organization is, you know, buying a property and using it for their purposes, and they want to seek tax exemption, they would do that, you know, initially. So we don't, we haven't done that, so we are paying taxes. So like, if we just don't pay taxes on our buildings, then we could get into a lot of trouble with the municipality. So any kind of agreement, any kind of payment in lieu of taxes agreement, it would be up to the community to decide whether they would accept that, it would not be up to us.
Okay, all right, I didn't understand that.
And can I follow up on that? Are there any limitations on the funding that you get that require that you continue to pay taxes, or would you be eligible to file for an exemption considering all the funding sources that you're using? Are there any limitations on the funding that would prevent you from filing for an exemption?
When we use the low-income housing tax credit program, we actually have to set up a limited partnership with an investor who buys the tax credits. And as a result, the ownership of the property is really a for-profit entity, even though we, as a nonprofit, are the controlling entity within that limited partnership. And so therefore, because it's not a nonprofit that owns the tax credits, the low-income housing tax credit project, there is no allowance for not paying taxes.
So is that like Laconia Area Land Trust is not actually a non-for-profit? It's just another division that you guys operate and that you're the non-for-profit? Is that the type of structure?
No, we are a nonprofit, and some of our properties are owned by the nonprofit. The newer developments that we've done using the low-income tax credit program are the limited partnership structure that Sal just mentioned, where the nonprofit organization is the general partner in the limited partnership. So it's a little, I can show you our org chart, it's a little bit of a nightmare, but we have a lot of different entities that are, like, every time we do a new project, we set up a new entity for the purposes of forming that partnership that's required in order to use the low-income housing tax credits. So like Sal said, technically, those entities are for-profit entities, but I would say about, what, a third of our portfolio at this point, in terms of number of units, is eighty, I think eighty units or eighty-five units are only, yeah, by the nonprofit. But we still pay taxes on those units as well.
Quick question. I think the development in Plymouth, the developer, the private developer, do they ask for tax rebates based on the percentage of what the income, of what the rentals would be if it was not subsidized? Because I believe I remember that coming through.
There, you may be thinking of, there is the assessment formula that's used.
Right, so the assessment goes down, so they would pay less in taxes on the workforce housing because of the program that it was enrolled in.
Right, because it's not market rate housing, you don't use the same formula that you would use to calculate the revenue that would be coming in if it were a market rate development. So I think that might be what you're referring to.
So property taxes are less.
Yep, yes.
All right, I think unless the board has any more questions, I think maybe we should move on to the next item on our agenda and say thank you to Carmen and Sal and George. Thank you all for joining us this evening, I think we all learned a lot.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thanks, Carmen.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good one.
Night, everybody.
All right, thanks for putting that together, June, that was.
Yes.
Yeah, well, thanks to them for doing, I learned a lot.
All right, unfinished business. We have a continuation of discussion and public hearing for a site plan review application on Tenny Mountain Highway. And for construction of a sandwich shop with a driveway and parking for property on Boulder Point Drive, PID number 213-002, in the industrial and commercial development zone. June, did you have some updates on that before we really jumped into this?
Yes, I do. So I sent, I think it was just yesterday, and I apologize for a little bit of last-minute scramble to get this out, being off for a few days last week and just getting some pieces together. So just as an update, the plans that you all have in front of you, which is the same as what I emailed to you, are plans that we received, I think it was the 23rd. We had asked at the last meeting on August 19th, we asked the applicant to package, you know, into one, one package, the application, because we had received some, received it in different documents, so we asked for one document, so this is what we got. We did get this to our town engineer, Mike Vignali, for review, so I also sent you his memo, his letter to us with a number of points of details that, mainly around the drainage, that he had some questions and concerns that Nick is here and perhaps he can talk about. Since then, and so I wrote the staff report, I did send it yesterday to the owner of the property and to Nick as the engineer designing this, and I had a chance today to talk to Joe from Highway Department about the guard rail, this was a question that had come up. So on your plan here, there's a couple things I've highlighted. I did not have a chance to draw, to highlight in all of yours, but there is a guard rail along Tenny Mountain Highway, all right? And I had talked.
Mountain Highway or Boulder Point Road?
Excuse me, Boulder Point Road. So there's about 80 linear feet of timber guard rail that, it's my understanding that from an engineering point of view, that really there isn't the, it's kind of borderline in terms of the slope of the road there and the way it drops off of if a guard rail truly would be required by proper engineering standards, but what has happened, we've heard just from the way the road functions, while this might not really be required, there's actually been a number of cars that have gone off the road there in the wintertime as they come down. So Joe had suggested getting a guard rail there, so they did put that in, but when we looked at it today, I wanted him to look at it, and he suggested that it be extended up past for about, on this plan, I said, well, it's only another inch, so it's not that much garden, it's only about an inch, because where they are going on, is that, where they're going off is above where the, there's a culvert under the road, which has a little bit of a steeper drop-off. So that was a suggestion that Joe made this afternoon when we talked, okay? In addition, there's, and we need to ask about this, because the water line is being shown, it's the line with a W, I've got it highlighted over here, and I believe as of today, they actually are relocating that and trying to bring it up right close to the road. There's been some excavation going on right at the very edge of the road. So Joe also is trying to determine just, and we're asking Mike Vignali, next time he's there for construction inspection, to review that, because this was a change that was made in the field, that can happen at times, but that's not reflected on this plan. So I'd like to hear from them, what's prompting that change, why is it over there and, you know, not being shown on this plan? We need to get that in the right place. And it really is related to the Aroma Joes development, but it's not being caught here, okay? So those were two things that Joe had brought up, and I've emailed Mike to say, I thought he was maybe coming this week or beginning of next week, next time. He's here for the construction inspection to really make sure we understand where that line is, where the wetlands are, for the Aroma Joes part, and how this will all fit in, so.
Is Boulder Point a town-maintained road, or is that a private?
Yes, town owns it now, yeah. In addition, there's one last piece too, where the sewer is cutting across. I know that there was a conversation about getting a trench permit for that, for digging into that. We need to have that, Joe has a process for a trench permit to cut into the town road. The town's planning to pave that, so we're hoping to try to get that work, that sewer line connection, done before the town goes in and repaves, because we'd be a patch, and then we can pave over it rather than putting down the new pavement and then they dig into it, so. So we should probably be asking about the timeline for that, getting that trench permit together, so. I know that Mike and Joe talked today, I think, about it, so. Those are some late-breaking updates.
All right.
Changes, so.
Well, thanks for scrambling to get this stuff out this week.
So I think, I believe the water line change was really as a result of requests from water and sewer, but when these things, and again, they can happen in the field, but we need to make sure we understand where those lines are and where things change, so we can ask them to explain it perhaps. And so my staff report, I'm not going to go through all of this, but I guess the bottom line is my, I did add in at the end possible conditions of approval to consider at some point, but I do want to point out that this package does not have the building design, the building elevation, we're still missing the signage details, which we had asked to have on the 19th, kind of brought into that whole packet. So we have, from the previous submitted, a sign with no dimensions, don't even know where it goes, I think it's supposed to be a wall sign, but we don't know what the building is to put it on, so, that sort of thing. So I guess, you know, a lot's been done the last couple weeks since the 19th, and Mike Vignali did get the report together, but he definitely has a number of corrections that he was suggesting, and things to clean up on the civil engineering part. And then, once that's done, he will need to review it again to make sure that it's all been taken care of, that all of his bullet points there have been addressed.
I have a question, hadn't really been thinking about before. Given the proximity and sharing a property with Aroma Joes, which I guess is presumably a drive-through, right?
Aroma Joes is.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just imagining, like, going to this place and saying, I might want to get a coffee and a sandwich. And I'm asking, like, what that process looks like in my head. I mean, presumably, I would drive through Aroma Joes and then park at the sandwich place, and I'm just, I'm thinking about traffic flow between, not just to go from these to Boulder Point Road, but between one another. I mean, it looks feasible to me, it looks like looking at this, but I'm just kind of thinking about it in my head right now.
I think there's a wetland crossing, and there's a wetland in between, and there's a drop-off for the retaining hole there, too. I think the solution of giving your sandwich and then leaving in your car to go get a coffee is good.
That's an interesting point that I hadn't thought of, a sidewalk maybe leading over to that crosswalk to Aroma Joes, just around that corner.
I could just imagine them both being a stop on the same trip, you know?
Yeah, because I would imagine Aroma Joes doesn't want Rapp City serving coffee, so. You just get your coffee at the sandwich shop. Maybe they'll serve Aroma Joes coffee at, I don't know. But, you know, that's a good point, like, that might be something to consider talking through with the applicant about it.
Well, and also just thinking about site connectivity amongst what's above it as well, just knowing that there's a lot of foot traffic that comes out of the housing that's up the hill there, so.
I'm thinking of a sidewalk between, you know, coming off of the turn, the new, the new piece just around the corner, it's a small area of a sidewalk there, so you can park it, and maybe walk over the other for the coffee, perhaps.
All right, so let's maybe give the applicant a chance to address, I think the water line question might be a good thing to start with, and then I'll remember what the next thing was when you're done.
As you know, Aroma Joes is on this lot, it's under construction now, and part of that construction will be paving of the driveway. So because of where the water line is located on Tenny Mountain Highway, there's no water line on Boulder Point Road, so we needed to get water service to a future site development prior to that pavement being installed, so that we wouldn't have to ditch trench through that pavement once it was placed. So working with water and sewer, we applied for, I don't know what you called it, but a temporary application to stub to the back portion of this lot for future development. So that's why the work is, you know, the water line for this new development is being done prior to approval, because it's a utility, it's not something that typically, you know, needs planning board approval, so we moved ahead with that to get that moving forward. Where we showed it in this plan was between the driveway and the rain garden. That was my understanding when we met in the field of where water and sewer wanted to have it. The change came in the field, water and sewer, either through my misinterpretation of where they wanted it, or them changing their mind based on, you know, a little bit more thought onto how they want this. They'd like it between Boulder Point and the rain garden, so basically this water line is flopping over to this side of the rain garden, staying within, really within private property. The lot line is very close to the edge of pavement in that location, and it, I don't know, probably would have come before this board where there was a lot line adjustment between the town and the property owner in order to accommodate the entrance from Boulder Point to Tenny Mountain Highway. So that's the deal with the water line. Basically, it's a one-inch line, service line, that's going to serve a building on the lot. Sewer, there's a couple of, we did get some comments from water and sewer, preliminary comments, we haven't submitted our application with, which we would do after approval from the planning board, but the initial comments on the sewer were that because it was going to be a food service. to be a food service facility that they'd want a grease trap. So I've added a grease trap to the plan. And basically, again, we're trying to get the sewer done before Boulder Point gets paved this fall. Again, not wanting to cut in. So that work should go forward, you know, soon. In terms of other comments, I can go one by one through each of the comments and just kind of give you if that makes you feel whether they're... I don't think any of the comments are drastic in terms of changing the site plan or how things are laid out on the plan. The first comment was about the size of this wetland crossing. Basically, we're taking the uphill runoff, putting it into a catch basin, discharging it through our site, and just continuing it on its natural path. Previously, we had a drainage report that cut off the upper limits of the drainage area at the property line, and I've since extended that drainage area up to where Tractor Supply is. Tractor Supply actually drains into two separate BMPs that are on the site, and one of those BMPs travels, you know, closer to Boulder Point Road and actually crosses this culvert that we mentioned with the guardrail. And then the other one is further in the back, and that actually drains down, and there's a cutoff trench that runs behind the butter, and that trench feeds water that comes down the hill, comes down this way and between the two properties, and then to the culvert out under Tenny Mountain Highway. So we calculated that area, sized that pipe appropriately. It's an eighteen-inch pipe. I think previously I'd showed it as a fifteen-inch pipe, so...
The second drainage is the one they were talking about, putting a bridge over so that they could walk between the budding property. Thank you.
Item two, catch basin grates for roadside swale and wetland area must be designed to be non-clogging. A non-clogging grate such as NINA R. 4349C must be specified. We're happy to do that. I don't think that's a big deal. It's just a matter of a note on the plan and getting agreement that, you know, if I select something other than that, that it's still a non-clogging basin and the town's happy, town's engineer's happy, we can resolve that easily. Underdrain outlet locations must be shown for building foundation, all retaining walls. Roof drains outlet must be shown as well, so that's just a matter of... It is a flat roof. This roof drain's going to connect into the underground storage system. Because it's a, you know, rooftop impervious service, I want it to go to the BMP so that it stores that runoff before discharge. Same thing with this upper footing drain behind this wall. That'll get tied into this underground system here. These, there's an underdrain along this wall. The way underdrains are on that side, every fifty to seventy-five feet, the drain just daylights through the wall, so pretty simple. It's just an elbow that goes right through the wall. And then the underdrain behind the wall up top is all connected to this catch basin and will drain into the catch basin and then down the hill on its natural path. And that's similar to how, you know, the site drains prior to development. Clarify how the catch basin in the northwest corner of the storm tech system will be connected into the stormwater system. So we've modified the storm drain system. We've actually rotated it slightly so that both catch basins are connected with a header, and then those each feed into a single... What we'll actually create is two isolator rows in this storm drain system. So an isolator row is typically one that has a structure, a manhole, or a catch basin at the end of it so that it can be more easily accessed and provides more water quality Calculations indicate a three-inch orifice outlet and plans to pick six-inch relief drain clarification required. So that three-inch orifice is, was noted in our stormwater calculations, and that was the accurate outlet device for this system. So that's going to be incorporated into that catch basin so that there's a way for this thing to drain out. And it drains out through a three-inch pipe because you want to slow the rate at which it goes out from that system. The four-foot minimum cover requirement indicated on the details of the storm tech system does not appear to provide, to be provided in the north end of the system. So I had a discussion with storm tech manufacturer's rep engineer today. We've actually selected a different storm tech product. It's actually the same dimensions, but it's designed for up to, as a minimum of eighteen inches of cover from the bottom of the flexible pavement. So then we've got three inches of pavement, so we need twenty-one inches of cover, which we've got more than that for this system. So that's just something that was a detail on the storm tech system. We show a note that says four-foot minimum, and that was for that specific product. We've changed that product. What's this one? If GeoGrids are required for the walls, they must be shown near the subsurface detention system to ensure that there will be no conflicts between GeoGrids and the storm tech system. So GeoGrid, if you're not familiar, a retaining wall that's over a certain height needs a GeoGrid laid in the backfill of it, and that GeoGrid actually provides a structural stability for the system so that it won't overturn. And so these walls that are near the storm tech system, the tallest portion of the wall is six feet in that. And so for the blocks that we're using, six feet is actually the limit for when you would need GeoGrid, so we don't actually need GeoGrid for this. Typically with retaining walls like this, we would have the contractor submit a shop drawing anyway with the stamped by an engineer who's certifying that. Certainly, if they want to put GeoGrid in there, they have a way of doing it with that storm system also there, and they will make it work to meet their structural design. And so I don't have any issue with that. And frankly, we have room to move the storm system further away from that wall if we needed to. Retaining wall between the patio and driveway may need a railing. Please clarify and depict the railing if required. So we did call out, we called out before that we'd have a precast retaining wall with pedestrian railing at the top, so that's this wall here. So there's a pedestrian railing that's physically attached to the top block of that wall. Just needs to be added to the detail on the detail for that wall. I think my detail right now shows a guardrail because that's the instance that we have when we're having the wall along the parking lot here. So I showed the guardrail on top instead of the pedestrian rail, so I'll just have to modify that detail to show two scenarios, one for the pedestrian railing and one for the guardrail. A swale is required along the top of the south wall at the wetland to prevent flow over the wall and direct stormwater flow to the catch basin. So he's looking for a swale to be built along the top of this wall so that directs flow to this catch basin. I haven't had a chance to talk with Mike Vignali about this, but the design of this wall actually has a backfill of crushed stone behind it, so any runoff that comes down that hill will come and percolate into the crushed stone, and then there's a footing drain behind the wall that would then take that runoff. We can certainly grade a small swale in that top portion of the stone. Whether it will actually carry any surface runoff, I would not expect it to unless, you know, that stone gets clogged up over time, but, you know, we'd like to keep a very shallow swale that minimizes how much we're impacting of the wetlands. So any swale we grade up there is, you know, potentially impacts those wetlands. So what we've shown for impacts will allow us to grade out like a six-inch swale in that stone, which is more than enough to carry the runoff that we would expect, which is really zero. Clarify the end treatment for the proposed timber guardrail. End treatment is typically for like a crash rating on guardrail, so our end treatment is really just to end the guardrail with a normal ending of the piece of timber. Because this guardrail is really in a low-speed parking lot area, and we can talk about this guardrail on Boulder Point where that might have a more appropriate place to have a typical end treatment, which for a timber guardrail often is to take that last horizontal member, turn it thirty degrees or so, and dead-end it into the ground so that, you know, a head-on collision doesn't hit, it would kind of shoot it up. Whether that, you know, that's how they do it. And details for the proposed site construction must be added to the plans. So he wants a detail for the sidewalk, curb ramps. Those are typical details, all certainly easily added to the plans. I don't think there are anything dramatic in terms of just getting better construction notes and detail on how we would construct the sidewalk. So the sidewalk would be a, you know, typically it's a four-inch-thick concrete or a bituminous asphalt. And so we talked with Mike and just determined which material would be preferred and add that to the detail so that the contractor can build it. So those were the engineer's comments. I think Mike can talk more about the building design if that's something that is of interest. I don't know if there's questions about the engineer's comments specifically or if there's anything that you felt is dramatic in terms of...
I have one minor question. I mean, you were very thorough, and I appreciate that very much. One, two. The fifth point down, there was a question about the cleanability of these, of the three, I guess the three-inch pipe?
Yep.
And I'm not sure you addressed that or not. I'm just kind of curious what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, so when we showed, previously, we showed a relief drain that would come out of the stone, so it was basically leaving that stone. So it would have an end where you could clean out to the end, but you wouldn't necessarily be able to clean out if there was something blocking it from inside that stone. You'd have to physically dig out, you know, excavate, and, you know, if that was the case, you would have to do it in order to have your system function and part of maintenance. But what we're going to do and what I think Mike was suggesting in his comment was if we could have the three-inch orifice in a place where it could be accessed and just more easily maintained to keep it clog-free.
Got it.
We will do that. So putting that basin there and then having that three-inch come out of the basin accomplishes that.
Thank you.
So am I correct in understanding that the drainage structures under the parking lot will have a drain so that kind of if they fill up, they will overflow out?
Yeah, so they have, there's typically a header that's between each of those catch basins. So each of those catch basins will feed equally into isolator rows, and those rows are the first rows that get stormwater.
In the chambers.
And then once, yeah, those chambers.
Yep.
And then once water fills up beyond a certain amount, these catch basins will then spill water into the header between them, the two, and then spill water into the chambers that are between the two isolator rows on the outside.
Okay.
And then in addition to the three-inch outlet, we would have, we can have something higher up so that if the system were to experience a hundred-year storm, it has a place to relieve itself. Or actually, I think the hundred-year storm would still physically stay within the catch basin.
Okay. I'm trying to better understand the engineering of how that works. The schematic helped, and it was, you know, I appreciated having that. Forget where it was. I was wondering if there was a tie-in of the drain anywhere, but that's okay. Oh, last page. There we go. All right, thank you.
Questions from the board in the engineering?
May I give the board a photo?
Sure.
And I'll explain. This, what I'm handing out now is the revised version of what I gave the board at the last meeting. I felt it was kind of plain Jane. It was the first, pardon me for throwing them out.
That's okay.
It was a little bit plain, so I went back, changed the top a little bit, gave it a little bit more, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you. Gave that a little bit more class. In my opinion, with the flat roof, somewhat difficult to do. Also, if you would, this was the, this was the one that you first saw, this tan one. So what you see now has got the vinyl sheaths down the bottom and then has got some character up in the top. That's about all we can do on that one. I can't address the signage. I received word on that today. The Rapp City signage, this is their fourth store. They do deal with a company out of Nashua where they typically get all their signs from. Very, very professional group. They know exactly what they're doing. The size of the sign that they are requesting would be ten feet long and four feet high. Apparently, according to a gentleman at Rapp City I spoke to, he checked the code. I did not. He checked the code, and that would work for the town. So ten feet high is what he was requesting, I'm sorry, ten feet wide, four feet high in the front, and then on the side, as you're coming up Boulder Point, it would be the same. And this is subject to change, but I don't think it would be going to be bigger. And then the back of the building, which is not on this one here, that, and that's a tough one to do because you've still got to degrade that thing out, but that's where you'll be coming down Boulder Point, and your eyes will pick up the back of the building. It's projected the size will be smaller than the ten-by-four sign that I just spoke about on the more public areas being the front and the side facing Tenny Mountain Highway. I hope that better explains it. So ten feet wide by four feet high encompasses all the lettering that this company would put on this building. And then you've got vinyl sheaths down the bottom and more design character, whatever, up on top. I don't think I told Nick, but I've been, I met with Jason on, no, I met with Kim on Friday and submitted all my applications, paid my fees to Water and Sewer, and that's where the episode of the water moving a little bit that Nick was talking about. So Water and Sewer is fine. They're simply waiting for approval, and then Jason will start on his review of the plan set that they have. Pretty much what I have.
It seemed like the notes that Plymouthville Water and Sewer had offered had described basically what you had done, so it makes sense that your realignment, you know, sounded like the comments were asking for the water line to be moved there anyway, so...
I did have, I forgot to mention, another email from Jason I was copied on about this. So, you know, yes, that water, movement of the water line is a result of their review of it makes sense, I guess, but we want to make sure we understand where the boundary is there. And it's, again, I just want to point out, it's not where the water line is shown on the plan, so that needs to come, be updated. Mentioned about the grease, we'll talk about the sewer, too, so...
Do you guys require as-built? Do you require an as-built?
That would be a condition of approval.
Yeah, so we would, I think, all of this stuff is probably subject to move a little bit during construction, and I think we would pick up all of those changes in the as-built process so that ultimately the town gets a plan that accurately reflects where utilities are. I think that's important. I mean, it's nice if the town has it because usually we go looking for it and nobody has it, so...
At the same time, because this isn't approved yet, it would be nice to get it as accurate as possible at this stage, you know?
Are you, is the electric service going to be underground or is that overhead?
That is all in right now. That is all in right now.
It's in now?
It's pulled out.
Okay, okay. Is that, is that a pad mount?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Where, yeah, okay.
I'm trying to remember what our requirements are for the elevation, because we have a sort of conceptual draw, I mean, illustration or drawing of what it's gonna look like, but as far as height, and you verbally told us what the materials are, but as far as what the, what the materials are, lighting, things like that, I just want to make sure that's all taken care of. I just can't remember off the top of my head. Original submittal did have lighting design material information, that's not in this set. We did, again, it's that packaging of what's, you know, the bits and pieces from the first submittal, plus this, plus that, makes it a little bit harder to know which pieces are, it's like you throw out this sheet, but they're keeping this other one. So the lighting, I had checked that, I believe, before, and it was, there is some lighting on the site that matches what was gonna be at the Roma Joe's site portion of it, so there was, am I correct on that, that there's some lighting poles in here?
Yeah, I mean, dark sky compliant, downcast.
June, pardon me, the Rapp City folks say that upon approval, they'll be more than happy to go back and to retain the sign company for all of these, their work that they normally give. No problems applying you for any more information and more detail, that will be coming from the sign company that we're contracting with, Roma Joe's, I mean, no, Rapp City.
Is the lighting that's represented on the building, do we have the detail for that or is that, is that just kind of an artist's representation for now?
Yes, at this point.
We do not have those details, I was just gonna add that. There's a couple of poles...
It appears to be downcast, but full cutoff, but at the same time, you know, that's, it'd be good to get those specifications as well.
Is there lighting aside from what's on the building itself? Is there gonna be any standalone lighting on the, on the property?
I think we had the relight pole.
Is it on there? It's hard for me to find it on there.
The upper, there's one pole on this, okay, it's on there. Sheet C1, yeah, C1. There's one in the upper here. Got it, thank you.
Yes.
There was another. All right, cool. Other questions from the board?
What is the maximum height for the building in Plymouth? Is it thirty foot?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two feet? So this is definitely...
Oh, yeah?
So, I'm good on that. Do we have to open it up to public?
I'm getting there. Any other questions from the board? I don't need the gavel to do that, but I keep grabbing at it. It is eight twenty-five. There's no members of the public here in this room. Is there anybody? Nope, now there is. Everyone laughs when you come in the room. I just opened up the public hearings, if you wish to speak of any nature about this application, now is your time.
I do not have any to say. I did not come in because of that.
Is there anybody in our home audience that wishes to speak? And that means you too, Steve, if you're still around.
No, on June, there's nobody on Zoom.
Okay. All right, I'll bring it back to the board. I guess my thoughts are, we still have a lot of things that the, a lot of engineer, is this mine? I'm throwing stuff all over the place. Best I can count, there were eleven points that the engineer raised, one of them seemed to not apply, the thing about the Geo Grids. So there's ten, ten things that need to be addressed from the engineer. And just some things that need to get realigned on the final plans that we need to make sure are on there as well. And then the extension of the guardrail along Boulder Point that's on the plan. Is this something that the highway department does, or is this something that the highway department wants the developer to do?
There would be that the, because it's related to this development by having additional traffic there, so Joe has requested that that be added to the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so I asked the department heads to review it. Police chief was the only other one that responded and said there was no, he didn't see any issues. But Joe and I had talked, he had mentioned that about having guardrail because there have been cars that have gone off there. And I did talk to Mike Vignali about it, and he said, "Well, it probably isn't really required from a pure, you know, slope and engineering standpoint." But the way that road functions in the winter in particular, there have been cars right around that culvert that have gone. And partly it's that culvert kind of drops off, so it's a little bit of a, just where the curve is and how that headwall fork comes.
I might have a comment on that. I don't know whether, if they, if they build it to where it shows on the plan, if they could kind of leave it open-ended so the town could add whatever they wanted to add, because they're only adding traffic to their store, they're not adding traffic coming down the hill that would be coming off the road. But if they could leave it open-ended so the town could come in right at the end and continue whatever, whatever they wanted.
A sharp skewer so the town can finish it off? Again, that would be at the town's expense. We don't, you know, we aren't planning on that. Without this development, there probably wouldn't be, you know, just again, there's gonna be more activity there, so cars will function a little bit differently. There may be more cars going up, you know, coming down to get, go to this site. So that was a suggestion that was related to the development. And really, all of that guardrail was being put in as a relationship to this development at, I had originally requested it and talked about it based on it, and we're just asking it to be extended a little bit further as part of this development. That extra inch, you know?
Yeah, I learned about this about three and a half weeks ago, that I was picking up this guardrail. I was unaware. So the town bonded the road to the asphalt, not include the guardrail if in fact it was an issue. Okay, turn to me and ask me to put the guardrail in, I will. But I had not planned on that.
Yeah, I can see, I mean, I feel like this is a hazard, in my opinion, this is a hazard whether Rapp City is in there or whatever is in there or not. I certainly can see turning traffic, having more people slowing down to accommodate for cars coming in and out, but, you know, I don't know.
I would think the only thing that would affect someone going off the road there is if someone's, perhaps the road is slippery, someone's slowing down to make a right turn, and someone coming down the hill has to evade the person slowing down to make the turn and they might go off there. But, you know, I can see that if the, this, well, the Roma Joe's road would have done the same thing without this particular development, but it is the same parcel altogether too.
I wonder if Midstate's willing to chip in?
Yeah. I guess I would, I'm trying to look for an email, see if it was in an email or verbally, but again, I, I guess I, I believe it was more than three and a half weeks ago, I talked to Mike about you should add in that guardrail, and that's why, I'm trying to remember when you first produced the plans, it was, I knew it was there because it was a suggestion, just get it in there. It just, all I'm saying is it, you know, it really should come up a little bit higher around that curve as part of this.
I'm actually thinking about there's a way to protect the building if someone goes off there, like, it's also an investment, protecting your own investment too, right?
The suggestion was that, you know, cars go off the road there, so me as the engineer says, you know, "Do you want a car to hit your building?" "No, I do not want a car to hit my building, I'll put a guardrail so that it doesn't hit your building." We weren't necessarily trying to do the town's job to protect cars from going off the road further up the hill from what's gonna hit our building. We don't necessarily think a guardrail is actually warranted based on a warrant analysis for a guardrail there. Probably why a guardrail was never built there in the first place, so, you know, I think, you know, we showed, I think, a good faith effort to try and protect people coming down that hill from causing a problem that would be, you know, more devastating than them just going into the ditch. So, so by us putting a building there, we put a hazard that became maybe a little bit more warranting for a guardrail so that there's not a catastrophic event with a car going off the road. If it, you know, and I, I guess I'll leave it at that.
On July 26th, after a review of the preliminary plans, and I think we had seen it at a meeting, and I wrote to both Mike and Nick and suggested putting it there exactly because of that. Well, it might not be needed from, you know, apparently cars have gone off the road in the winter, we don't want somebody crashing into a new building, so...
You know, my memory might not be accurate, but when that drainage along that road was first designed, it was not as deep along the side of the road, and I believe the town engineer said, "Why don't we make it deeper?" And all of a sudden it is, and now we're pulling, pulling out cars right and left. Sometimes engineers have great advice and sometimes it can cause some issues down the road. I'm comfortable with them adding what they've added, and I appreciate that, that's a good gesture on their part.
I guess if, if we think that the traffic from this property is going to cause more cars to go off the road, if that's the impact and that's why we need a guardrail, but if we're just extending a guardrail at the developer's expense to cover the existing conditions of the road, that to me...
I tend to think it's the latter at this point, and I would feel comfortable moving forward with the guardrail as they've proposed, as long as they're willing to cover that.
Seems like it's been a chronic problem, cars going off the road there.
Yeah, this is no...
So I don't think it's his responsibility to fix that problem.
It's not his responsibility by snow tires for people either, but they should.
Exactly.
That'd be a weird condition to put on approval.
One of the other engineer notes that's here, that's the last bullet on that page, it talks about the retaining wall between the patio and driveway may need a railing, and at least to me, I see that labeled on the Plan C1.
Railings?
Right, it says precast block retaining wall with pedestrian railing at top.
Yeah, I think, I think the detail doesn't show it on our wall detail, so our wall detail shows a guardrail.
Unlike the, like the elevation?
It's, we can deal with, you know, with the town's engineer, we can come to an agreement that says, yeah, that's, that's what I want for, and...
See, D2 in the bottom right-hand corner right by you.
So she, that's where he's talking about, he's talking about adding.
It doesn't, there's gonna be five to six feet of space between the timber guardrail and the six-foot drop-off.
Yeah, because, so like a crash and a, a guardrail that's getting impacted from a car creates a lot more force, and that force, we don't want that force impacting the wall.
Right.
So there's a separation between, and actually, so the wall designer or the wall manufacturer provides a minimum distance for the back of the block to the base of the, I think it's on the detail, but to, I think it's the post of the...
E2.
Yeah, it's on the post, to the post of the guardrail.
Yep.
And that separation allows those two systems to kind of act independently. And that's, that's the condition we would have for when there's a timber guardrail above the wall. When there's a pedestrian rail, the force of a pedestrian is a lot less, the weight of the block itself and the construction of the wall would withstand, you know, they can, they can, with that guardrail, either attaching it to the wall itself or put it right at the back of the wall. I think the blocks are 28 inches, so it'd be about two feet off the face of the wall would be the railing.
So I guess I would agree with Phil that you guys did an excellent job of going through each bullet that the engineer, our town engineer, mentioned. And it looks like you've addressed every single one, and there's three things that I see that would need to be addressed on the plan to move forward. And I see one of them as what was just mentioned was, well, I'll start at the beginning, the second bullet, which the catch basin grades, and you said you would put a note on the plan, very simple. The other, the second item is the last bullet on that page, and you said that it is shown, but it needs to be shown in the detail. So it's shown on the plan, but just needs to be put into the detail, which is the retaining wall between the patio and driveway may need a railing. And you're saying it's there, it just needs to be added in the detail portion.
We were, we were accounting for a railing there, yeah.
So that's the second item.
We intended to have a railing there.
That's the second item, and then the third item that still needs, would be the last bullet, details for the proposed site construction must be added to the plans, and you said that's, that's an easy thing and just be added. We'll add it, you said you would add it to the plan. So those are the three simple things that are easily addressed from all the items that the engineer wanted addressed, and so I, I appreciate their thoroughness with that and willing to add those items that the engineer said to, asked to be added. And the other item that I would put for a conditional approval is when you have the height of the building, and I just want to make sure it's under the 32-foot maximum and it looks to be no more than 20. So when you know that height, that would be great to have on the plans or with the plans. And the other, that's, that's the fourth item. The fifth item for condition I see is the, is the lighting plan that we already have, the building lighting plan, to be brought forth onto the newest plans, which you've already got, just to put it with the package. So those, I see as five conditional things that I'd want to see if we were to go forward tonight, and I'll see them as very minor.
In addition to development agreements and...
Yeah, addition to all the boilerplate, things that we would require for any develop project, so...
So I guess as I, as I understood Nick to say, you know, there was 11 bullets that Mike had, I think there was one that probably didn't need to be done with the, what was it, the Geo Grids? But I actually feel like all the others, what he said was he's gonna make the change to the plans, so it's not...
It would be conditional upon making those changes.
For, for 10 of the 11, not just the three, because even like the number one was like, he needs to change, the pipe suddenly, I think, says 15 feet, he needs to change that on the plan to 18 inches, 15 feet, excuse me, 15 inches.
Which, which bullet?
Drain, this one here, where is it?
If the condition were to address all of the engineer's comments on the plans, then we would certainly be able to do all that. I guess what I was trying to do by going through them is to demonstrate to you a comfort level that these aren't dramatic...
But there's, just do it in one, address all of them.
Comments, I guess, and, and just try and give you guys a comfort of making that a condition of approval, that, that you have a comfort level, that, you know, these aren't something that's gonna significantly impact the way the plans are or the way the site is presented to you. Does that make sense? I don't know.
So I don't even think we have to exempt the 11th because the engineer's statement is that if Geo Grids are required for the walls, they must be shown near the subsurface, and the engineer has stated that they're not required.
Any of them, I would say we address all of them, you know?
Just address them all.
And some of the, his items that Mike Vignali said, you know, clarify or explain, and they explained it clarified, and the only things that I picked out were the three things that actually needed to be written down in the plan because he explained it to the board. But if you are okay with explaining it, re-explaining it to the engineer in writing with a letter, that's fine too, if the board requires that.
I think, I think clarify, like, for things like, clarify how, blah, 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 underdrain locations must be shown for the building, I don't think that, that was mentioned. That technically is a plan change that you're gonna have from what you've seen. So where those underdrains physically daylight themselves to relieve, you know, drainage. And so I guess, I tried to explain where every one of those is gonna go, and I'm gonna make that same explanation in a response letter to all of these comments. So I'm gonna write a response letter that's gonna explain, clarify anything that doesn't change on the plans, and explain stuff that does change on the plans, and then I'll submit the revised plans that say, "Here, I've kind of taken care of your comments. You know, we had conditional approval that I would do that, so now we've met that condition and we're on to the next condition." So that's kind of how I think we've done it in the past in Plymouth, and I think I've done that, and I guess that's kind of how a conditional approval works. done that, and I guess that's kind of how a conditional approval works, I...
Usually, yeah, you'll get the written response, you'll give a written response to the engineer's comments, so they have to, your response, I mean, it's great, we can all nod our heads and be like, oh yeah, that's great, but I don't think any of us are engineers. I know, I understand, you know, about 50% of what you're talking about, so, so that's why we have the engineer, so, you know, the conditions need to be met to his approval, and so the best way to do that is by writing that down for him.
And, and editing and revising the actual plan, because I can tell you, it becomes very confusing two months, two years, 20 years later, to have a set of plans going to the minutes to say, this is the clarification, this isn't really, really wasn't a 15-inch pipe, he said it was gonna be an 18-inch pipe, you know, so we need to see that, just all the edits. Clarifications in the letter, you know, he's mentioned a number of edits that are addressing all of those comments, so just have a new plan set brought forward.
And I think that would, like, you guys would sign a set of plans, right? So I think the plans that you would sign would be the final plans that kind of worked themselves through the engineer's comments, you know? I guess I can't guarantee that the, the next set up drawings I sent to Mike with my comment letter, he won't come back and say, well, you missed the point on this, can you change that? So then I would revise again, and then it would be, each time I'm gonna send a fully completed set of plans, and then once those plans get kind of the town engineer's blessing, we would, June would take them to the board, the chairperson, I think, would sign them, is that how it works? Yeah. So those plans, yeah, I think those plans that ultimately get documented for the town...
It was me, sorry.
It's okay, sorry. Are the plans that have the engineer's comments incorporated, so, yeah.
I have an extraordinarily small comment on this title, the use is listed as drive-through beverage shop.
Oh.
I can update that, yeah.
Wow.
I figured, I figured that would be an easy edit.
Mike's gonna want a discount.
So if we're ready for...
I wanna, I, well, I don't think I closed the public hearing, did I?
No, I don't think you did.
You wanna close it or continue it?
Oh, I guess we can find out if we're gonna close it or continue it, but I don't know, I've heard from a few people on the board, but what do other people think? Do we feel comfortable? I guess I can just say, start by saying, I would love to have something in the plans that say the building height, something, if there's not, like I said, I, I looked through these, I just, I feel like that should be part of the approved plan, right, the building...
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the building design standards, and while we may address, it does address height, but in a very general way, it says that in areas of higher density development, the recommended maximum height for a building is taller of the adjacent buildings, not to exceed the mass, maximum permitted by zoning. I know that the, the buildings on the site next door are two-story buildings as well, so it's, it's less than the abutting property.
But I guess we have a sort of a rendition of what's happening, and not a...
Not a plan.
Not a plan, so it's hard to say what the building height is.
True. But, I mean, we, we actually, I'm looking at our building design standards and the site plan regulations, and they're not very specific. I mean, we have some recommendations about exterior design, and...
But I do feel like our, as far as what are requirements for our site plan, I don't have the site plan regs in front of me, but I think there is a requirement for the elevation of the building height. I'm not talking so much about the design, but I just, I think it, to me, it'd be important to have something in there that just says, you know, the building height is this.
I would, I would agree with that, and as long as he can, as long as we make that as one of the conditions, that we get the building height before he gets his signatures, as long as he's okay with that, I'm okay with moving forward.
I suspect that it's going to be built economically as most commercial food places are, and there's not a lot of extra money in building color.
Right, I would, yeah, I would assume that as well, but I just, I just think it's important for us to have, you know, if all of a sudden a four-story...
I agree.
Tiny tower goes up.
The site plan review says an elevation viewer photograph of all buildings indicating their dimensions and surface treatment.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be just basically this with some dimensions and, and, you know, text boxes that say vinyl, that stuff, so.
Good. I'm ready to make a motion.
I'd like to hear from, I feel like I've heard from a few board members, what do other folks think? Do we wanna continue this? Do we feel like we have enough information? There are a lot of, I feel like there's still a handful of conditions we're throwing on here, but I'd like to hear what other folks are thinking about.
You know, I, I feel like I have enough information. I don't feel like that information is very well compiled into a neat package, and so it's a tough one.
But I think we're asking them to do that, right? We're gonna ask them to address the 11 bullet points, we're gonna ask them to update the plans before they get final sign-off, so I, I hope, right, we're, we're gonna have an opportunity to address that if they're not addressed, or if it's not compiled.
We'll have, I'm fairly confident in our ability to approve this with conditions of approval, recognizing that I think the applicant is willing to provide details on the building and, you know, the issues that are identified by the engineer on an as-built plan. I, I would like to have, you know, the building treatment and dimensions included on the as-built plan as well, as, as part of the as-built package, I guess, and, I mean, I think with that, you know, I think we went out of our way to address this tonight, and I think the applicant has made a good faith effort to get everything we've asked him to do, and I'm comfortable moving forward.
Who would like to propose a list of conditions, so we have them all?
So I'll make a...
You wanna close, just close the public hearing?
Yeah, close the public hearing.
So I make a motion that we do a conditional approval in that the applicant answer the bullets on Mike Vignali's letter to Mike Vignali's satisfaction. I also, as a second, and that would be one condition, that whole letter, a second condition to show the height and the dimensions of the building.
And the treatments.
And the treatments. The third condition would be to bring the lighting from a previous rendition to this plan that we looked at tonight, and then all the boilerplate conditions, I through seven?
You should read those.
I'm gonna, you want me to read them off?
Would you, please?
Development agreement, within 30 days deliver an agreement, the agreement, agreement will include all conditions of approval and additional standard text. The applicant is required to establish an escrow agreement, escrow account with the town of Plymouth to cover periodic construction. Cost of construction inspection to be determined in consultation with the planning and development director and the engineer. Escrow agreement is required before construction begins, prior to construction, this is number three, applicant is required to post surety in the form of bond or a letter of credit. The surety will be maintained until the project has been completed. The amount may be reduced over time as determined by the engineer and the planning and development director. The planning board authorizes the chair to sign the final plans on behalf of the board. My signature, or the chair's signature is required before construction begins. The wetland permit is needed before construction begins. As-built plans stamped by a New Hampshire licensed engineer are required within 30 days of project completion. And conditional approval will expire in December 31st, 2022, unless substantial progress is made on the site prior to that date. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 We note that Steve had left the meeting, so we wanted to...
But he's also a non-building member of the full board tonight, right?
Oh wait, sorry, I was thinking, I apologize.
Okay. I thought hard about it before I said that, before we even got here. All right, so I think everybody said aye, no abstentions.
I cooped.
Nobody opposed? All right.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Nice work, everybody. Oh, report to boards.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'm not gonna lean back anymore.
I think maybe we should get the developer to put a guardrail behind you.
Just let me crash, like the cars.
All right, I lost my agenda. Here it is. All right, any reports from committees? We don't have our conservation commission member of the board here tonight, or our conservation commission member of the audience here either. Anything from the select board, Zach?
I was trying to think if there's anything of note, but I don't.
We're missing out on Mary Ann's participation in the economic development committee as well.
I can speak about conservation commission item.
Okay.
There was a, a major river stream bank project that was completed last week. It was pretty sizable, and want to thank the Plymouth River Advisory Committee for pushing that through. It was on my family farm, the farm's been in the family for a number of years, 1897, to be exact, and it was always a high level of concern that we were losing land, some, some years 10 feet, and we own half a mile, three-quarters of a mile on the river. We would lose 10 feet in a certain section every year with the flooding, and it was just the perfect storm with the type of corner that we were on, where the water, river was coming right at us, and the fact that there was no rock, nothing to stop the erosion from continuing, and, and it was causing a lot of issues downriver with a lot of the sediment that was coming off our property, and just inundating all the poor property owners downriver. And there might have been one or two people on the Pembroke River Advisory Committee that would want to stop it, but cooler, cooler heads prevailed, and the project, which has been in the works for two years, did get done, and it's, what an amazing thing for the town of Plymouth to have that, and my family's very appreciative, so.
Thanks, Matt. I did think of one thing from the board, an update that the house at 30 High Street has now been taken down, the one that has been burned and abandoned.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that project's not completed, but it was taken down yesterday, cleanup continued today, and hopefully the lot will be completed tomorrow.
And the, is it presumed that, that will be auctioned in lieu of back taxes?
I don't, I don't know if there's necessarily a back tax issue there.
I guess the selectmen have to decide there.
But, yeah, there's, what, what happens next is a good question.
Oh, right, I guess they could retain ownership, and they pay the back taxes and cost of demolition, or cost of reclamation, right?
Yep. So, I get a quick update, yeah, so the demolition started yesterday, and today, there was one more piece, that they have to disconnect the water and sewer lines in the street, and that's gonna happen in the few, and the highway department might be taking, taking care of that, or the contractor. We are, and the next step, I just want to say that we had a number of waiting periods, of appeal periods, where the owner, so the first day we were able to start the demolition was yesterday, and I really want to give Scott Reedon a big call-out for making this really happen, he's put a lot of time into it, and...
Scott did a ton of work to make that happen.
And also John Madigan, our, you know, our attorney for the town, has also been very good at guiding us quickly through this, and knew exactly what to do, and then one of his other attorneys on staff, so that's gone well. So we will be putting liens, and John's gonna be working on that, the cost of the demolition, and the legal fees and other, other associated fees, so we'll put, we have a lien already, the final tally of that amount will soon be, once we have the invoices, will be legally filed at the registry of deeds, because the town does not own it, but if the owner sells, then we will get, we will get, at that point, get that money, we cooped, so, it may be some time, and that's just the way it goes, but I guess the neighbors are happy.
Yes.
We are.
Opportunity to build one of five primary residences here in Grafton County. I still find, I don't know how that can be possible.
I can't either. I mean, I know, well, I mean...
It's gotta be houses with the purpose of sale, and not like you build your house on a piece of property you own.
I think that's, he referred to something along those lines, that it's...
Well, I think you said it was not, as primary residences, not as secondary homes or vacation homes either, and there might have been more homes that were built as second homes too, I mean, that tends to be, a lot of our construction tends to be vacation homes.
Yes, the numbers seem very small.
Yeah, I think, there's gotta be some asterisk next to that.
Especially when you consider how much of the Upper Valley is in Grafton County, and the fact that, you know, like in all of Hanover and Line, like, they're still...
Yeah, there's gotta be something, something missing in that statistic, because, yeah.
Five houses that were affordable.
Yep. That seems awfully high.
Yeah, I don't think you can build an affordable new, new construction house.
All right, I think there's no public comments.
One last comment.
Oh, yes.
Sorry to always jump in at the end. I just want to point out...
Good thing you did, because I was about to move to adjourn.
I know, I was trying to get into it quickly.
It happened very quickly.
I have a draft of the September 16th planning board meeting, so after another long night tonight, we actually will, so far I only have one boundary line adjustment, although it's a very complex one, it might take a little time to explain, but currently there's very little on the agenda, so we could either save some time for some more zoning ordinance, or kind of follow up at the housing, maybe I'll try, I'll try to have some time to maybe dig a little bit more into housing after we heard, and thinking of what are regulations saying, if that would be helpful, or if there's something else you'd wanna put on the agenda.
Or a quick meeting.
Or a quick meeting.
They probably deserve one.
Can I ask one question, June?
Yeah.
I noticed that the road across from Eaton Road has been going in.
Yes, I noticed that.
Notice that?
Driveway.
Fatherland Trust.
Driveway, yes.
And a for-sale sign.
And a for-sale sign.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
So the water, the lot, if you look, the, yeah, we subdivided out the four plus acres.
We did finally get the final Mylar, and we threw another back and forth, and we got it to the registry of deeds last week, so now that is officially done, so I guess he's, the owner's deciding to sell.
So not, yeah, but just one of the lots at this point, right?
Yeah, he's selling the one to the left, and it's an apron that the state required, that's why he paved it.
Yeah, interesting. I was a little concerned when I saw the geometry of the apron, it's really flat by the road, and then it's, it drops off pretty quickly, and I was thinking, like, somebody with a long truck, an RV, is gonna have a hard time accelerating to get onto the highway, because the RV is gonna be hanging on the hill, but maybe that's not gonna happen at this point.
The board didn't approve, you know.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know. I was still thinking he was coming back for that, and he may, he may still have the, I mean, if he's gonna sell the lot up by the road, he had plans to put residential units there, which would have been nice also.
So it's the resident, the uphill, I thought, I guess I thought it was the other side.
I don't know.
But, yeah, but I, I don't know why I thought that.
Isn't that, didn't you say it was the part by the road, the left?
Yeah, that's the part that he's selling at this point.
The upland area that's got buildable acreage there, not flooding.
That could change tomorrow, though, with Joe.
All right, anything else from folks? Phil?
I don't want to be the only one who makes these motions.
You're good at it.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.